We'll call the work session to order. And amendments to the zoning ordinance?
Chairman, you all had a public hearing on December 20th and this is, you all referred this into today's work session. So I think it's part of working through this, Mr. Frederick here and such.
All right. And this is the same paperwork we had before, right?
Yes, sir. Just reprinted everything from your.
Okay.
I don't have the, I managed to come off without the extra paperwork that Brian had provided me with last time. Josh, in one of the iterations, there was a list of businesses excluded. Where would I find that? That's the quickest place for me to find that. Is that going to be?
That's been on the original planning commission recommendation? Was that the one you're referring to?
It may have, it probably perhaps was.
Of course, your neighbor was there. Do you have it?
That was where?
Oh, the planning commission? No, I do not have a look at it.
Did you email those to me, Brian?
I'm looking to see if I can find it on email.
Yeah.
I think you did email me those.
Allison was the one that compiled all that because I remember.
What planning commission date was that, Josh? Do you remember? I'm attempting to find it as we speak.
Who emailed it to me? Was it?
I did. Allison. Yeah, Allison to me and then to you. So we're both.
Well, we're chasing that down. I think you got a typo.
Okay, you all, I think that typo should be discussed for at least 10 minutes, so.
On the home enterprise number nine, it say accumulate a total of one non-family employee.
Got it.
That should be four, I think.
1216. Here it comes, Mark.
I'm sorry, Lee, that was on item?
Item nine under home enterprise. Are we talking about multiple enterprises? Numerical limitations?
No, you're right.
It says a total of one non-family member. I think you mean a total of four. Since that's the same thing that you had in item two.
Where, I'm sorry, Lee, this is, this is on home enterprise number nine?
Yeah, number nine.
At the end it goes, i.e. a total of one non-family employee.
And I think that should be a total of four. Because if you're looking number, on number two there, we say total of four non-family members.
Oh, okay. I, yes, that, yeah, they should obviously be in.
Yes, that should be in.
Yeah, okay.
Josh, was the April 7th planning commission?
I was trying to find where that would have gone to the board because their recommendation would have been included.
Well, if you're looking at the at the home occupation, where you go, it says one, which is okay.
On item nine, the typo that Mr. Frame is referring to was a copy and paste from me. So in the planning commission, it wasn't listed at all. There was no clarification under home enterprise, but there was under home occupation. So I duplicated it for consistency, but it didn't change the number. It's still number one and it just needs to say number four. If that makes sense.
I actually, I, I got it here. I'm just trying to figure out. Under the original, this is, this delay here was caused because I was trying to find the, the list that was in with the planning commission had originally sent us back a little many months ago. And they had listed, there was a list of exclusions. So these things will not include, and they had nine of them here. And they were, well, I'll put the, I'll just read these out and you all can, and we can, we can discuss these. Vehicle or equipment rental, camps and campgrounds, adult-oriented businesses, veterinary services, that doesn't include pet grooming, animal rescues, kennels, recreational uses, medical offices, junkyards, and salvage operations.
Medical offices?
So I, I think we could probably all agree on number three, adult-oriented businesses should, if there's going to be a list of exclusions, that should be on there. Everybody except for representative for Lake of the Woods.
Which section of the lake, sir?
How many feet is it from the water? And I, I can see junkyards and salvage operations should, should also be on that list.
Is there any, any definition that goes with the one you just said about recreational?
Yeah, it just says recreational uses. Josh, can you speak to what that's referring to?
Yeah, we thoroughly defined that with the previous amendment. We have indoor and outdoor.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay. Well, they would get past the total vehicle trips of 25. I suspect. Same thing for a medical office.
Just so we're clear on the way the American Association State Highway Transportation Officials, ASHTO, where they define a vehicle trip is a one-way trip. So post office swinging by your house would be a trip, UPS swinging by your house would be a trip. You going to work coming back would be two trips. Your husband or spouse coming back, two trips. So right there you have six.
Yeah, that's what, but if you have.
UPS counts, UPS counts as one trip? What if they stay and have lunch with you?
Refer to the manual for that one.
I mean, it's a little odd. It's the same amount of, of same activity.
What if the postman parks up the street and walks down and then walks back? Who gets that trip?
I don't, I mean, I think, I think that all nine of those really are probably, I don't have a problem with including those nine. Because I don't think those are the kinds of things that we envision when we talk about home occupations.
What is, is the language there an absolute exclusion or is it requires special use permit or is there any, any out at all or is it just an exclusion? Okay, I just.
Well, it says permitted home occupations or home enterprises shall not include any of the following uses. Now, I'm sure there'd be cases where it could be done by special use permit. But, but that's, that's different from this.
All right, so we're looking at adding the exclusions back in.
One of the questions that was raised, I guess in, Josh, in your conversation with the planning commission, I'm trying to find the language, you, you made a comment with respect to including the accessory use language, having it be accessory use to, to a dwelling. And I'm, I'm concerned about doing that. I mean, I, I did a little bit of research trying to figure out what an accessory use really is. Even to the point of figuring out what, what did the court say about it? And what I found was next to nothing. It's, it's a, it's a very ambiguous kind of thing from what I could tell. And I think the approach that we're taking, especially if we add the, this list of exclusions to it, of trying to identify and either minimize or mitigate the, or limit the impacts is probably the right approach from a policy standpoint. As opposed to trying to create a list of things that include, or can be included in a home enterprise and, and/or going through the kabuki dance of trying to define what an accessory use is. It, it just, you know, I found something that I've read that I want to, want to point to that, that sort of tells it all. This is, this is out of, just happened to be some cases that were in Albemarle County. go through this, this whole gyration of what's incidental or what's the other word that they were using? Not compatible, customary. Has to be customary and incidental to the primary use. And, you know, when you, when you start going down that road, you, you end up with a mess because one of the, one of the rulings came out like this. It says the character of the primary use determines the character of the accessory use. And the accessory use must be allowed in the zoning district. And I started thinking about somebody, you know, operating a plumbing business. You look down our list of what can happen in, in ag, and I didn't see plumbing business on there anywhere. And under these definitions, I don't see how a plumbing business is accessory to bathing, sleeping, cooking, watching television in my house. And so, I mean, it gets, it just gets, you know, nutty.
So you'd say somebody who had a plumbing use could meet all these criteria with established.
But not be an accessory use.
But because it's, because it's, you know, plumbing is not what you normally do in a home.
Sitting in your living room, no.
That's, that's really why the phrase a home occupation is accessory use to a dwelling is so important. Because that covers that issue by itself.
But what does it do? Does it prohibit the plumbing business?
No, it permits it.
How in the world can you define plumbing business as an accessory?
Because we have a definition for home occupation, which that would fall under. And we declare a home occupation as an accessory use to the dwelling, so.
No, no, back, back. Take the word accessory use. Tell me where and how we get around the accessory use confusion.
As it is right now, we specifically state that home occupations, so businesses you run out of your house, are considered accessory to a single-family dwelling, which is a listed permitted use.
So any home occupation by defin, by our definition is an accessory, an acceptable accessory use, other than this list?
Correct.
Or, or something that doesn't meet these criteria.
That's why I've been really adamant about that phrase. It's really important to the.
The more I read it, the more adamant I become that it's absurd to try to do that.
The alternative, what a lot of other counties do is you have a list of permitted uses in the ag district, then you have a list of permitted accessory uses, and you have a list of special uses.
But wait a minute, I guess my.
Even if a guy says, okay, I'm running a county business out of my house.
That's not an accessory use.
That's not.
To the primary use.
Of living in it.
Of living in it. That's what I'm saying. You, you can't, you can't make that leap of faith. Now, you can do it by defining it, as you're suggesting, but that makes no sense. That's why I come back to, let's talk about what the impacts are as opposed to trying to, because theoretically someone could have a perfectly acceptable kind of business, but the impacts could be outrageous.
Lady gives piano lessons at her house.
Except she does it through amplifiers the size of this room. The impact is what you care about. And so I, I, I just didn't, it troubled me from the first time I saw that because I.
I mean, I could easily say, well, I, I work at my desk at home, doing my taxes. Okay, so I'm going to do taxes for a lot of people. Similar, similar use, same way. I play the piano at home and I'm going to, I'm going to have some kids come in and play the piano. I mean, I sort of leave with you, but I, I could easily see where, where, you know, you can, you could say an accessory use is something similar that I do in the home on my own, even without it, if not a business.
Well, but, but I'm afraid defining, you know, just because it's a home occupation, occupation is automatically an accessory use. Doing that violates the, this incidental and customary language that I've all of a sudden lost. And I don't, I mean, I don't want to make a big deal out of this. It's just, I, I, I think, I think if we focus on impacts, which we've done, limiting parking, parking noise, all those kind of things, and having an exclusionary list, which I agree with Mark, I think that's a good idea because some of these things are pretty obvious. We don't want to ever be defined as a, as an acceptable use. That covers this.
Your comment here is any business could be legally established as a principal use of property anywhere. That was your concern in, in your memo.
That was also the concern of the planning commission as well.
But if we're, but if we're saying that, that we have limits on what you can do and the certain, certain list of things we don't allow at all, but we provide these eight or nine limits on what we do to prevent the impact, I think that probably is a stronger, a stronger argument than trying to get into what is an accessory use for a residence.
I'll give you a real-world scenario the planning commission actually came up with. And under the, what's currently before you, the way it's worded, is as long as it's a house, there's no requirement for anybody to live there. So you can open up the entire house as a retail store. And that would be permitted.
As long as they don't have more than 25?
No, no, it says you have to live there. Very first, one of the very first requirements to deal with impacts is you gotta live in the place.
Well, that's for home occupation. Not necessarily for home enterprise.
No, it's, it's home enterprise. Number one is the business owner resides on the premises.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Number one for both of them. That, that's my question. It's, we, we already say you gotta live there. And the only thing I would see is the primary function of the residence is a place in which the business owner lives.
And again, just to give you a real world scenario, you could get, let's say you have a 4,000 square foot house and the owner stays upstairs in the bedroom and the entire house, say 3,500 square feet, that is a retail store.
Okay, as long as, but he can't have more than 25 total vehicle trips. So that's pretty, that's, that's a lot of waste of square footage for retail if you only have 25, you know.
You're back to the impacts, which I think is where we should focus our attention.
And again, I'm being devil's advocate for the benefit of all here. Without, if we take away the certificate or permit requirement, we have, there's no checks and balances for that. So we don't know if it's occurring or not. We rely on complaints at that point. Which, that may be an acceptable system, but I think it just depends.
But Josh, that's, yeah, I mean, like Jim is, is muttering to me. I mean, that's, that's how we rely on it anyway. We don't, we don't have any way, you could, you could put that in there and you, I suppose you could go out at the, at the time and, and say, but the business hadn't even started then, so how's the permitting process? That doesn't allow you to really keep an eye on what's going on.
Well, they sign a certificate saying I will comply by these standards.
Well, the only real permitting process we currently have is through the commissioner revenue's office being tied to the state department of taxation. We don't know that anybody's even running a business until the commissioner's office says, hey, we collect the tax because this person is working out of their house. Isn't that the way it currently is?
If they bothered to do that, that is not a guarantee, I agree.
No, that's not guaranteed. That is the only, the only current way.
Any business that's run out of a house that requires state approval, federal approval, insurance, a loan or anything like that, they require them to get written zoning approval from the county. But having it in your code doesn't work. They don't take that. They need it in writing from the zoning administrator saying that what you're doing is acceptable.
Even though they don't need a permit, if they need to go to a license and the licensee says, the licensor says you've got to have, we need to make sure it's within the.
Well, that's a zoning, that's a, that's a, yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a zoning finding. If someone were going to, I mean, okay, let me, let me ask this question. If someone was going to buy a retail store and they were going to, to, to borrow money, wouldn't the, wouldn't the lender want to know that, that retail store was on property? So you're not issuing a permit in that case, correct? You're just issuing a, a letter saying, yes, this is.
It'd be a zoning determination.
Right.
It'd be basically the same. And actually, not that that carries more weight than a permit, but it's the same process, more or less. You still have to ask for it in writing, just the whole little thing.
Well, I certainly don't object to, since I, I know that one concern people have is a convenience store. I, I have no objection to making number 10 be a convenience store. Although clearly a convenience store is, is, would, would not be practicable if you were limited to 25 vehicle trips a day.
And you have to live in it.
And, yeah, and you have to live there. I, I, I mean, I think that's fine.
Can I, can I add something on the live there, though? My parents live in Germany. The towns they live in, probably 80% of the people live there where their businesses are. I've got, I've got an uncle who's got a textile company. His house is here. You go out, there's a door, you go out and you're in the factory. And it's a textile factory. Now, they don't have a lot of employees, but that, that thing hums and makes a lot of noise, which is okay as long as it's inside. But I'm just pointing out, in Germany, I would say probably in the town, my parents live in, 80% of the businesses, the people live there. So that's not, that may be unusual here, but, but, I mean, it is done. So, you know, it isn't hard to run a pretty serious business and live on the, on the.
Well, it does save, it does save gas and, and pollution if a guy can work downstairs and live upstairs. There's advantages to having.
That's why Europeans do it. I mean, you know, they don't have to travel to work.
Well, the point is, these are home, these are home enterprise and home occupation. If the person wasn't required to live there, then it wouldn't be a home, so it wouldn't work. So, I mean.
So your first criteria keeps it that way.
So my, my only amendment to what we already have is, is that we list those, take paragraph E off of the, I don't think any of you will have this in front of you, but it, it says uses specifically prohibited, permitted home occupations or home enterprises shall not include any of the following uses. And those, I suppose will have to be broken up and one put in each, in each area.
I can print out that.
That would be great if you could do that. Lines 90, 92 through 102, and then just add convenience stores.
I'm not even sure you need to add convenience stores. Well, because you've already got the limited 25.
Let's do it, though, just so it's clear to anybody that convenience stores are not.
We may be able to project it on the screen.
One of the things I do want to point out, though, as well, when Josh created that prohibited list, he created it with the expectation of all that other verbiage, accessory uses and all of that. I don't, and I, I don't want to speak for Josh, but I don't know that it's a well-thought-out list. For example, thinking of my uncle's textile company, do, do we want manufacturing? As long as you live there, as long as you live there, can you have a big giant barn out back and have a manufacturing facility? We may or may not care. I'm just asking. Because I don't know that Josh sat and really analyzed what other uses would be a problem. So, I mean, manufacturing just popped to mind.
Well, a lot of home, a lot of home occupations will be manufacturing.
Sure.
But they're limited by the number of employees.
Limited by the.
But there's those, you know, some manufacturing makes, it's back to what Supervisor White was talking about. Some manufacturing is low-impact, no noise. Some is very, very noisy.
Yeah, so we've got. We have a noise, we have a noise thing there. It talks about if the equipment produces it and the label will tell you.
It's just got to be inside, but we don't prohibit it. So we could have heavy, as long as you put it inside, you can have pretty heavy manufacturing. As long as you're living there and, and put the manufacturing.
Any mechanical equipment that produces sound levels in excess of 50 decibels, such as air compressors and air guns, will be confined to interior use.
Can I make, makes cabinets? Makes furniture.
Yeah.
That's manufacturing.
I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, Thomas, and, and these things can be nitpicked to death. But, I mean, we're not going to have Motorola come in here and try to run a, run a home occupation. I mean, that's just, a major manufacturer like that just doesn't exist. I mean, it doesn't operate that way, is what I meant to say. I wandered off mid sentence there.
By limiting the number of employees, limiting the.
Drop the default word in there.
Limiting the noise.
Very strange.
We've, we've pretty much avoided that.
No, maybe something else we need to add to that list. But I think that we've gotten rid of most of the, the significant impacts.
Well, and the noise actually, I was, I guess I was leading into is do you want an exterior noise decibel limit as well, even if it is interior?
I had some problems with that a couple of years ago. There used to be a noise ordinance.
We don't have one.
Couldn't be enforced according to.
Sure.
Well, this says sound levels in excess of 50 decibels will be confined to interior use. So that's saying you can't have anything.
Right, what I'm asking is, I mean, if it's loud enough, it might be inside, but you're still going to hear it fairly.
Yeah, I've got a tin, tin building.
Or a non-insulated wood barn, which is allowed. I mean, the fact that you stick that 50 decibels inside a non-insulated wood barn, I mean, you like.
But 50 decibels is.
It's actually pretty quiet. It's about us talking.
Real quiet.
A little bit more than us talking, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, lawn mowers, what, 80, 90?
Well, yeah, well, farm equipment.
Yeah, 150.
That's an accessory use, I'll have you know.
There, there's some cows next door to me that easily exceed 50 decibels.
Come and listen to my 150 calves when I wean them.
That's why we don't have a noise ordinance.
Yeah, 50 is pretty low.
Yeah.
Really is. Because I don't think hearing protection's required until, what, 90?
Yeah.
90, 90, or something like that.
But that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is if it's 120 decibels, as long as he sticks it inside the wood barn, uninsulated, I mean, that he can do 120 decibels inside that barn.
Well, if that, if that happens, we'll come back and we'll, we can amend this. And I use the word we advisedly. We can come back and amend this.
I think what you're likely to have is you're likely to have bench saws and stuff like that, lathes, grinders.
I mean, the vast majority of the people that are using this are, are small operations that are doing involved in businesses that I think all five of us agree are appropriate. We just don't have, the complaints we get have more to do with just, you know, somebody's running a business next door to me and I don't like it. That's, that's the complaint. It's usually somebody doing automotive work or, you know, maybe someone.
Farrier or something working out of his house. Because their, their hammers can be loud. I know, I'm just.
If I could have delivery, just.
And it takes care of people shooting off fireworks.
The home enter, home enterprise is always intended to be more, a more intensive type of home business. The way this is worded, it actually is reversed. It's home occupation has fewer standards. It's actually the more intensive of the two.
What, let me say, say that again?
Home enterprise is always supposed to be the more intensive one.
Yeah, okay.
So home occupation would be a lady baking cakes out of her, out of her kitchen or whatever. And the home enterprise would be the guy out back with a wood shop making cabinets. And then we, we have right here, we have restriction on the number of employees, size requirements of the land, vehicle trips, noise limits for home enterprise. We have none of that for home occupation. So someone could realistically say, no, no, I don't want a home enterprise, I want a home occupation. And they fall into this definition and I have to comply with any of those standards.
I mean, a guy could, I could put in my garage and, and manufacture furniture. And it would come as home occupation.
If you only had one employee.
Yeah, and that's me.
You, you could have yourself and, and you could have one, right.
And I could do that as a home occupation.
Well, no, actually, you could have 12 kids working in there and one friend. I mean, realistically.
Well, the, I guess it's, 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 you know, we, we could certainly move over the ones that. Well, the, I guess it's, 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 uh, you know, we, we could certainly move over the ones that I did not include, uh, there, and that's probably my, uh, my bad for that. But, I mean, the fact is that, that the home occupation does have restrictions that are tighter than the home occupation. I mean, the home enterprise.
Except there's no noise.
For instance, there's no more than one non-family employee. That's considerably stricter than no more than four. Um, and, uh, number four under home occupation reads, except for one sign, there's no evidence during non-business hours that would indicate from the exterior that the building is used for non-residential purposes. Uh, whereas uh, under eight on home enterprises, it says, used for purposes not generally found in the ag district. So, I mean, there's, the home occupation is tighter. It, perhaps we should move, um, some of these that I didn't include, be- because, I felt that because home enterprise was more expansive, it required a, a little bit more fleshing out of what was, uh, what was, what was allowed.
Now, we, we allow home occupations in residential areas?
Yes, but not home enterprise.
Understand. But then we don't have, uh, we don't have any noise limits on home occupations.
Or the trip limits either.
Or the trips.
Yes, that's a big limiting factor.
I mean, because I could do it in a residential district, I could have all this noise in a residential district.
Yes, but theoretically, if you look at our predominant residential districts, there's not enough property to do anything. You know, I, I, you're, you're ranging from townhouses to, and communities.
Well, one thought that I had, and I, it may be, maybe this goes a little bit too far, but I, I, I'm worth talking about. Under the first line, which says home occupation means any occupation conducted within a dwelling unit, I'd almost be, uh, happy to stop it there and not talk about.
Get rid of the accessory building?
Yeah, or barns or garages and things, because if you're doing something that sort of spills outside the house, then I think we, then I think you want it on a bigger piece of property and other kinda things going on, so.
So, if somebody's got a, if somebody's got a garage and they're gonna use that to refinish furniture, then they, they wouldn't be able to, to do it. Unless it was a connected garage, then maybe they could.
Well, I'm just thinking, a two-car garage, I could make furniture in it, I mean, you know, and, uh, you got the, uh, the wine of the, the, uh, mo- inch, the, uh, saws and stuff like that going all the time.
But, but then, yeah, then that's part of it, is you, you're talking about, you know, tenter maker lots.
Yeah.
I'm not sure you want a whole lot of stuff going on.
Well.
In a situation like that.
So, you're saying, if we just, we include the, drop the accessory structure, such as a barn or garage?
Well, we just, it has to be inside the house, inside the dwelling unit. I mean, that's, which, like I said, that, that really squeezes it down, but that might be worth thinking about.
I like that idea.
What about somebody that does pottery and has a potter shed? Does that then exclude, now, I, sorry, folks, I, you know.
You're right.
I, it's.
We can come up with an exclusion for everything.
Yeah. Well, and we could also find, I mean, there is, in that, uh, you know, Jim and Jim are being yin and yang here. I mean, we can do this all day long.
We planned it that way.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know. Forever point, there's a counterpoint and a counter-counterpoint, and it never is, because and, and frankly, that's the way zoning ordinances are in general. Once you, once you start saying, you could do some stuff, but not other stuff, then you're in a, you're in a forever argument about what's allowed, what isn't, and what was meant by this line and.
And, you know, adding.
It's like arguing who, who should be in the baseball Hall of Fame. One, one guy, one guy, uh, famously went through that and he decided that everyone good to be in the Hall of Fame had to be at least as good as Willie Mays. And he went through and he kept eliminating people. Finally got down, all he had was Willie Mays, and then he eliminated Willie Mays, because even Willie Mays wasn't good enough to be in the Hall of Fame. So, you can, you can, you can, with home occupations and home enterprise.
Well, based on what we have, then, what, what is it we actually wanna do?
You asked the hard questions.
Yeah. That's, that's my job.
You're supposed to be managing this deal.
So, we, we wanna add in the, the.
Now, ten exclusions.
I, I would, I would, since I was the one who, who did a substantial amount of work on this to begin with, I, I would ask that we.
You started this whole fiasco.
We add, it's all my fault. Uh, that we add those ten exclusions in for, and they would go into both. Uh, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with Josh that we should add an item under home occupation that limits traffic. That really was kind of an oversight on my part. Um, I would suggest we go with maybe ten vehicle trips. I think the planning commission originally said something like eight. So, we could say ten. It's twenty-five under the home enterprises. I, I would, I would, and I'm sort of making this as a motion, but we go to, we go to ten for, uh, the home occupation. And I would, I would, um, what, what was the, the other one that you were concerned about, Josh? Was it the, uh, the noise?
Just a suggestion. Um, realistically, we don't have anybody authorized to run a decibel meter, so we could never actually measure these anyway if we got a complaint. But I don't know, someone in the sheriff's department might be.
We could hire someone.
Well, they didn't have them either, because that was one of the things we talked about when we talked about the noise ordinance. With the barking dog, it's like, we don't even have one, so.
I actually have one at home, if you'd like me to get certified on how to use it.
Yeah, but you can't win in court, cause you have to be at exactly the right position, and the wind has to be, I, I, I read some stuff about that, and it, it gets really crazy. On the home occupation, I'm, I'm looking at my comment about inside the dwelling unit, maybe, uh, maybe a little bit of, of an opening that I could be, um, miss. Home occupation means any occupation conducted within a dwelling unit or an existing garage. Cause you don't wanna build something new. Uh, you don't want it to be a shed. But, but I, but I agree. I mean, if somebody wants to go out and tinker in their garage, if it's, if they have one, these small lots, mostly we don't have garages. So, you know, you could.
I mean, what you're, what you're really pointing to, Jim, is that we probably need, um, three of these. Because here's the problem, we got residential property that's on two and three and four acres, that's zone residential.
Yeah.
But what you're really speaking to is, is the.
Tenth of a decade.
Of the very small acreage lots.
Or eastern dwelling units.
Um, so, I mean, it's, it's, uh, that, that's really kinda what you're, I thi- I think is what you're getting at.
Yeah, that's, that's my, sorry.
We, we would have to make it, you know, this would, home occupation would be, uh, R1 and, and ag, and then, home enterprise would be ag, uh, home occupation would be ag or R1, and then R2 and above would be the, the, uh, the white ordinance.
Well, we did, in, in home enterprise, we said two or more acres. I mean, you could do something here that's, that replicated that with a different number. It could be half acre or whatever number made sense to, to sort of deal with that. But I also don't think you wanna eliminate the home occupation, uh, for somebody that lives e- even in the lake, if they wanna do taxes out of their own. And it's strictly inside, though. I, I, me, that sounds okay. So, I mean, me, you might be right, we need three. I don't know if I wanna take that leap off the cliff, but, uh.
You could say meets the minimum lot size of the respective zoning district. That's essentially what we did with the two acres for the, uh, home enterprise. Just tied it back to conforming lots. Just a suggestion.
What was your motion, Jim?
Yes.
It, uh, it's been shot full of holes and.
No, I don't think so.
No.
Right, right.
We added the ten exclusions to.
Well, I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Jim, but I, like, with, without, without going to a third classification, which I'm pretty sure is gonna require a, another public hearing. Um, then I don't see how we, I don't see how we get there.
What are, what are we trying to, what magic are we trying to produce that we can't add language?
Well, I, I, at a minimum, I think I might take out the word barn for home occupation. It seems to me that, 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 that could get out of control. Uh, and I might even take out accessory structure entirely and, and just go back to what, have it be in the dwelling or an existing garage.
Or, or have it this, uh, conducted within a dwelling unit or accessory structure, uh, who, whose square footage is less than the, uh, primary home.
Two-car garage.
Yeah, that would.
Or something like that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, here, I, I, I agree, if, if you said that the accessory structure cannot exceed the, uh, the dwelling unit's square footage. And, and don't, cause then you, I mean, you can make some of these, uh, pre-engineered buildings, pre-dwelling big and call it a garage. Um.
I, I sell barns all day long. They, people call them garages in their forty by eighty.
Oh, yeah.
That's a whole lot. And if you, if you're doing classic cars, Wesley shops bigger than that.
Josh. Uh, currently are, um, small businesses allowed in residential zoning with a special use permit?
It depends on the type of business. Um, like in, in ag, for example, we allow, uh, quote-unquote, retail store and quote-unquote, office as special uses. So, they theoretically could come in and, and apply for that.
No, I'm talking about res- but resi- I'm talking about residential district.
Yeah, the same thing. I believe there's, uh, let me double check, so I don't wanna speak.
Well, maybe a middle ground here is, is to, is, is to accept Jim's idea, uh, to just say, within a dwelling unit. Uh, and people who happen to live on several acres that's zone residential, um, we just have to get a, a special use permit. They, they do, they do own residential land, the people around them own residential land, presumably. I mean, you're not gonna have. Yeah, if we don't, if we don't change that, we don't change that later, uh, later in the, uh, in the program. So, I, will, will that, does that address your issue? We just cut it off at, uh, within a dwelling unit?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Kill the rest of it, is that acceptable? Is that good with everybody? All right, well.
Mark, answer your question. In, in R1, for example, you can get an SUP for an office not exceeding four thousand square feet, close to four area.
All right, so the home occupation, then it's gonna go down to only conducted within the dwelling unit. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, if he's in an agricultural area, he can say, I want a home enterprise, not a home occupation.
Okay.
He has more than two acres, right? Okay.
I can live with that.
That was painful.
Well, it's a.
The little things that are.
It's sausage.
Yeah. I think that's really, we've gotta go through this pain to try to, try to keep ourselves from ending up with headaches later on.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a tough balance. You don't wanna create a lot of non-conforming uses out there where people already have operated business, but on the other hand, you don't wanna free-for-all.
It's, all right. It only took us fifty minutes.
Well, I'm.
This is only the fifth bite.
I'm trying to put together something here that sort of incorporates all this.
Okay.
So, at this point in time, then, once you finish your final iteration of the iteration.
Isn't nice just sitting in the background sometime?
I allotted a full hour for this.
So, is my question, are, are we going to actually vote on it or shall I delay it?
Depends on how good our scribe is.
Oh, sure.
I allotted a full hour for this.
So, this is, uh, you, you showed great wisdom.
Did not disappoint.
That's the name of the game. That's the name of the.
All right. Th- this is what I've come up with on the fly here. Um, so, under home occupation, the first, uh, first of all, we'll, we'll, uh, cut the, uh, the, the definition off at unit. So, home occupation means any occupation conducted within a dwelling unit, period.
Well, in which all the following conditions are met. You just, you have to delete those words, cause you still.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You need, in which.
Dwelling unit, comma, in which all of the following conditions are met. I think we've seen how understandable the scribe is. Uh, one, two, and three, I left the same. Number four, uh, will be, um, uh, vehicle trips limited to ten per day. Number five will be, uh, all parking will be situated on the interior of the property, tracking along with number six under home enterprise. Then number six will be, uh, any mechanical equipment that produces sounds in excess of fifty decibels. So, it'll track along with number seven on home enterprise. Then number seven will be, uh, the old number four, which is, except for one sign, there'll be no evidence, so forth and so on. And, uh, number eight is number five, which is if there's more than one home occupation.
Okay.
Now, your motion's right.
That, along with the ten exclusions, is my motion.
Is it ten exclusions or nine?
It's, it's ten. We've added, uh, convenience store. Number ten is convenience store.
Further discussion.
Could we get a second there?
Yeah, Jim.
Yes, I've got a, I've got a.
It's coming our way.
Hearing no further discussion.
Jim and I have done all we can do.
All in favor say, oh, wait a minute, this is a zoning thing, right? I need a roll call.
Yes, sir.
Need a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Frame?
Wait a minute, I, I, let me interrupt. Is, is this motion based on public necessity, convenience, and good zoning practices?
Yes.
Okay.
And second in my opinion that yes, it is.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may beat the dead horse.
Sure. And that language needs to go in the.
It's in their ordinance already.
Is it in, I didn't, I didn't have an attachment, so I didn't know if it was or wasn't, that's why I did it. So, the attachment, the actual.
Public necessity, convenience, general wel- welfare, and or good zoning practice, also support approval of these proposed.
So, it's already in there? Okay, I didn't have an attachment, I was just playing it safe.
Good.
Um, if you will humor me for nine minutes, uh, I need a little direction from my staff, cause right now we have a certificate process that people apply for and get basically approval to do these. Um, that being a certificate process that actually does change with this amendment, so I would like a little direction, if I could. Do we wanna keep that certificate process, or do we just wanna rely on the complaint-based?
Well, I, I thought we did take care of that with section seventy-one, one-one-six.
Yeah, so the zoning permit shall not be required.
It's never actually been a zoning permit, but we gave that as a formality, because the ordinance said so, but actually what they're getting is a certificate. And it seems like a, like an insignificant point, but.
No, they may be requesting this, may need that certificate for their insurance purposes.
Or for licensing or anything else.
But I guess what I'm asking is, do we wanna just scratch the two application packets we currently have and take them off the website, no longer use them? I've, I've got the, I've got the application pulled up, if I could switch screens briefly, Allison, if you don't mind. I've I've got the I've got the application pulled up if I could switch screens briefly, Allison, if you don't mind. Basically, one change documents, the standard stuff, what are you doing? Sign it, give it to us.
What are you asking? If I mean, if somebody says I need it? Is there any problem with filling it out?
No, 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 and what we do is a response to this, they sign it, they submit it, we have a list that basically has all those standards that you all just adopted. It says, basically, these are my standards, I understand, sign, and that becomes the quote unquote approval.
This is for you to uh say that what they're doing meets the zoning ordinance, correct?
Yes.
That's not for someone to come to you and say, I wanna do this, is it okay?
It'd be really be one of the same.
Well, no, because that's a permit.
We never treat it, I know they're probably the same, I never. I I get the.
Well, this is.
I mean, there because you could have a you could have a, you know, someone coming to you and saying, I I I got a piece of C one property here, I'm gonna put a store on it. But my lender needs to know that that is okay, and you and you would just certify that, yes, it is okay. But you're not you're not passing you're not passing a zoning, you're not not making a a uh a zoning change there, you're just saying, yeah, it's 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 C one and and what they're planning on doing is fine.
Yes.
Yeah, it's thank you, it's.
Mechanics, the in order for me to be able to say that, I need them to certify that they meet all those standards. So we usually have to have something in writing, period, in order for me to do that. The verbal thing doesn't work for zoning determinations. It legally just doesn't work, but I have to have it in writing. Which may or may not be an issue, I mean, we don't probably don't need anything for it, but just to so we understand the mechanics of it here.
But I I I think two two keys, that where was the preamble to your form right there? As it's currently stated, it bothers me because it says, do hereby request the approval of a home enterprise certificate and zoning permit for the property and the business. I don't think we wanna go there. I think what we want is if someone needs it for whatever purposes that and they come in and make those representations that you need, then you can issue something. I don't know that it's a it's a certificate of approval, it's a certificate of acknowledgement, maybe.
There there. Which is what, that's what we have.
Yeah, it's a certificate, based on representations of the undersigned or the the property owner. Uh, this is a acknowledgement that it.
But I I think it's something that has to be requested by the business owner, and we issue it as just a an acknowledgement. It's not a and that's the only case that it that it applies. But you can do that as a policy, you don't need to. Your policy could be, if you want me to certify that you're meeting the requirements, you've gotta tell me that you are, and then I'll acknowledge that.
Which is exactly how it works currently, to be honest. It's a shep- it's a separate sheet of paper, I don't have it on this computer, but.
But I don't think you wanna say application for a certificate and zoning permit.
We're just gonna say.
This would this would go away, I I agree.
You you would have a home enterprise acknowledgement form.
Which would be the appro- okay.
Okay, we'll just gotta call our certificate a permit or. And just and they had that based on the representations of of the undersigned. Certain zoning administrator acknowledges this is uh inconformant.
I I I I would suggest that this be I I'm with Jim, I'm I'm not happy with how it is currently, so I would like staff to to come up with a new form uh and bring that back to the board for us to look at.
Okay, I I think that's a good idea because we've worked enough on this, we should close that loop.
But if we use the principles of acknowledgement and representations, then that.
And request, the request has to come from the business owner.
Request representations, acknowledgement. All right, I think, John, we can we can we can.
I we've already got it.
I got every confidence you already got.
Okay, I think we beat this horse enough for tonight.
Thank you for uh your indulgence.
Uh, I think we've been working on this for a while.
Like to call the meeting to order, if you would, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any changes to the agenda as it sits?
No, I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Motion to approve, second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. All right, special presentations and appearances, presentation from Dr. Sam.
Good evening. Chair, members of the board, Mr. David, thank you for the opportunity to. There we go. You want.
It's not quite on screen though, is it?
I think they offer a class for that at Germana. Or what I do is I keep hitting buttons until I want happens.
Don't go away, just put this on.
Maybe the bottom icon to there, where the screen is at the very bottom.
Mute, and the north thing unmutes it. We'll find it, yes.
The problem, you know, this is fine for me, but it's not fine for the rest of the folks.
They have this in their packages too.
Yeah, but it's just small.
Look, while I.
Here we go.
Hello.
Pushing up buttons.
Thank you, Allison.
Nice work, Allison. Allison saves.
Let's try again. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to present to you a vision for the campus that's located in Orange County, to close the loop, to show you how we listen, trying to be good neighbors. And I'm pretty excited about what came out. I believe you have the the complete master plan that was approved by the local board, Mr. Kessler and Mr. Simon from Orange, as well as the other members, and accepted and approved by the state board last year. You know your own plan, and the Germana Wilderness Plan is what we were looking at. How can we contribute to that plan? And it was it turned out to be fairly easy because the the principles or criteria governing the wilderness plan Mr. Frame and others were involved with uh was very similar to what our values were in terms of what we wanted to do with our campus. Obviously, this is a very historic area, going back to seventeen twelve. We have on our on our campus discovered artifacts from all the way back to the eighteenth century, as well as the Civil War. It's a second growth forest that that covers most of our campus, but it also is quite beautiful and it's a living laboratory for our students. And our nature trails connect with the uh Memorial Foundation's trails. And so when those values were part of the county plan, we saw a definite connection. Obviously, our job is workforce development and education. And in order to make good use of this campus, especially its location in approximately the center of our district, it made sense since it had been heading that way anyway, to designate this as our healthcare campus. And uh so that's what we've done, and that, of course, is one of the industries that you are looking for on the uh Germana Highway portion of of the county. So this this master plan was something that that seemed to fit very much in with what you were looking at. Part of what your plan looked at was recreation, open space, nature trails. Again, we have those on our campus, and it's something we want to take advantage of. Well, here is the exact existing campus, and I guess the cursor doesn't work up there, does it? It only works on mine. Um, you can see the original building was built in the late sixties, opened October of nineteen seventy, very much nineteen fifty sixty kind of style of building. Quickly, inexpensively built, took up a lot of land, one floor, uh not much in the way of insulation. Very expensive to heat and cool, and the 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 state finally agreed that all the remediation we've done, replacing windows and everything, it just didn't make sense to keep trying to retrofit it. And they gave us permission to build a new building. Now, there's a line that runs uh from Plank Road vertically down to the building and then keeps going. That is a Civil War trench. When they built this building, they bulldozed it. It's not something we would do nowadays, but in nineteen sixty nine, they bulldozed this Civil War trench, and the building sits on top of it. So the the first building, the one that we already have detailed planning money for as of July one twenty seventeen, will be getting be beginning the detailed planning work, which is the first stage of this project. Uh, will be built right next to the existing building, as you can see on phasing plan one A. The new building will be probably three stories, a multi-story building. It will be around seventy thousand square feet, which is the size of the existing building and the three temporary buildings. Uh, I was told by a facilities guy years ago, whatever's temporary is really permanent, whatever's permanent is really temporary. Those three buildings have been there for decades, um so it will replace those two, uh but will go up. Now, that makes the building more green, more energy efficient, saves the taxpayers and us a lot of money in terms of energy efficiency. It also means fewer hallways, which means for the same square feet, we have more usable space for offices, classrooms, laboratories. I expect this building to be built sometime in the next six years or so.
In the next what?
Six years or so. What this will require is obviously we've got the first stage of the funding, but it will require the next governor to do another higher ed bond, which he or she, looks like he right now, will probably do normally when they have their full biannual budget, their second year. And um we are already raising money for it, we do have six figures stored from donors. I'm talking to hospitals, I'm talking to other donors, I'm talking to donor about a matching gift. Uh, and we will be, you know, asking our localities for support, including Orange County, at some point to help. Because we're gonna have to have approximately two and a half million or so. Uh, we don't have a final figure on what we have to come up with right now by law for a built this particular building. When you look at the area that's outlined, the building itself is covered by the bond. The loading dock area, the uh that little crescent quadrant of a circle is an outdoor learning space, miniature amphitheater. Uh, all the sidewalks, lighting, parking enhancements, that's not covered by the state bond. It would be if it were a university, but for whatever reason, the assembly in its wisdom requires community colleges to get the those monies from non-state revenue. So, um all that being said, I'm pretty confident this will this will rise, and it will be a healthcare building and a general purpose building with offices and so on. The second phase is to demolish the existing building, preserving the gardens and the memorial trees and so on that are there, but eliminating that building, carting away the demolished portion of it. The the next phase is to begin to create a green space and a courtyard in the middle of what will be the full campus. You'll notice that what we will be doing in this phase is recreating a portion of the Confederate trench that was demolished. And building a beginning of a road that will go through campus with a traffic circle that will go over the recreated trench, as well as having a courtyard with signs and maps, uh probably a Q S code so people can then go through the nature and history trails um guided. And when I say people, I mean Germana students as part of their classes, but members of the Orange community and visitors to Orange will be able to to make use of them. Probably at the when we build the building, the uh there will have to be an additional retention pond, we're guessing it's at the end the lower part of the screen of the parking lot there, because that's the drainage direction. You'll recall that the Rapidan River curls around there, and so it's heading towards the river, but we'll probably need a retention pond there. We go to the next phase, what we've proposed is a public amphitheater as you come in. So when remember when you drive on the campus, you make a bend, and as you if you want, when at the bend, you turn right, you go to our our namesake, the Memorial Foundation Visitor Center. Right there at that that intersection, we're proposing a public amphitheater. The uh Memorial Foundation is interested in this, they could have events, lectures there. Uh, we, the college, could sponsor events there, and of course, the community could sponsor.
You say that was an open amphitheater or was that closed?
Open amphitheater. I mean, unless we get a lot more money than we think we're gonna get, it's it's an open amphitheater, it's a landscaped amphitheater. Uh, further down the road, and I can't project how long this is, because what we're giving you is a thirty year master plan, basically, twenty, thirty year. The second L-shaped building gets built, some more green space, some more parking, and we create a full drive out that takes you by the existing soccer court. Now, if you go back to the very beginning, you'll notice that what we're trying to do here is to um not use went the wrong way. To not disturb the land where we don't have to. So we're trying to take advantage of where the land has already been disturbed and minimally knock down trees or whatever. So the athletic fields are already there, we simply enhance them, we create a circle drive. That means then the community could use those fields when the our students are not using them by coming in this drive. Uh, we don't project that the drive will be available for westbound three because V dots had too many intersections there. Uh, but eastbound, certainly you could pull there, westbound, you go down and pull around. Uh, this also helps us with health and safety, I'm concerned because we only have one way on and off campus. So if you have to evacuate campus in an emergency, there's a problem there. Uh, but it does give us the second building, another retention pond. And uh the little building down there at the bend is projected to be an historical built. In other words, not historical in itself, but a history teaching built. Could be a mini museum or something like that. So uh we 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 built the potentially have somebody build a cell tower. There's still a need for a cell tower around there. Obviously, the architects have been listening, and they threw that in here in this particular phase. Eventually, a third and last building and some more parking, another retention pond. Um, I should say that it was actually a fourth little building, potential of a childcare center, we hear. We hear regularly that our students, especially at this campus, which is about seventy percent female, because. Healthcare programs still are over or underrepresented male, overrepresented female. Older students typically apply to be nurses, many have kids. I wouldn't wanna run it myself, this would be something we would probably outsource. But having it on the campus would be something that would be beneficial to our students. So, what we've tried to do is to, to, uh, you can see the extra trails we've added. So, we've got nature trails, history trails, we've reduced the impact on the land to the minimum. We've created a nice through U-shaped road through the campus. It is primarily healthcare campus, it looks out into the future. It does offers amenities for the community, the nature trails, history trails, the amphitheater, the athletic fields. Are all potentially usable by citizens of Orange as well as in some cases, visitors. And of course, the other thing we have to look at, uh, we're required to do it, we would do it anyway, is to create a, a, a look. An architectural look that will harmonize with the land and, and, and echo the history and echo what is around it. So, the architects are not designing the building here, they're designing a master plan. They threw in their ideas of what these buildings might look like. But once we get to the charrette process and the design of the new building, it will govern the architecture for, for the other buildings from then on. We were trying to figure out something that would echo the fort. So, we've got that little capola-like thing on top of the building. We're required to use as much as possible natural materials that come from no farther away than like the Carolinas. In order to, the buildings are required to qualify for lead silver designation or the equivalent. So, but it would be nice if it, if it echoed all the way back to the eighteenth century in, in the history that's there. So, you know, this is the fifty-year vision that you have and our vision is twenty or thirty years of it. We, we continue to promise to do our best to serve Virginia and our service area and Orange County. To be good stewards of the land that is in our care, as well as the trust we have from you and, and the citizens of Virginia to. Educate and train the workforce for now and in the future. And, um, I look forward to any questions, concerns, suggestions you might have.
Do you, at, at this point, do you have a, a sense as to, uh, how much later the de- demolition of the existing facility would follow the construction of, of the. I think it's one A, I guess you would call it, is that something that would be nearly immediate or?
I shouldn't say I will have to, my, my successor will have to figure it out, how to pay for that. That's not included in the first phase because the funding is not there. The state board has approved this as, um, it will be the probably fifth or sixth on their list of thirty or forty projects the next time around. And, um, but that, that money will not include the demolition and so on. Uh, the building will not be able to be used by something else, because as soon as we announced this, we had people saying, well, can we rent it? And the state will not allow us to do it. It will have to sit there vacant. The physical plant is.
Rent it?
No. The physical plant is, uh, breaking down and it's so ancient, then unless you completely repair it. What we have to do now is we actually have to cus- have custom-built parts for it, because you can't get them anymore. And the, the cost to renovate it and everything was just prohibitive, it'd be millions and millions to bring it up to code. And the ADA, they're already telling us that you need to fix it, I'm telling them, hey, we're gonna build a new building and right now, they're happy with that, so.
With regard to the trails, you really don't get those to, you get most of the trails until you get into phase two.
Well, we have trails already.
I know.
Uh, but to finish the trails out would be further down the road. Now, it doesn't mean that it has to happen that way. If you go back to, um, one C, for instance, when we get to that point, we could connect the trails that already exist to the new courtyard and plaza. But even now, um, we have guided trails and our students can, uh, what we conceive of as history students and biology students, environmental students would mark the trails. That could be done anytime. So, a limited access to the current trails is already available and will continue to be available. But the new trails and the, uh, the custom signs and everything would have to wait until we have a way to pay for that.
Is that something that, um, should funding come from another source that, uh, Germana would be open to doing?
Yes, and, and, uh, we will, uh, we're already scouting out, um, nature-oriented organizations, uh, history-oriented organizations. And other foundations that, uh, we will apply for and if we get the monies, we can, we can do the trails anytime. If they pay for signs, we can mark them anytime. We've, we've hired, as a couple of years ago, we hired a grants coordinator to help us go after more grants. We're already looking at those. We're also looking at foundations for the building itself, for the two and a half million. Uh, there are some foundations now that are interested in supporting workforce and community colleges. Once the community donors, whatever, have demonstrated a certain level of commitment, uh, they're willing to come in to, to help. And of course, there's naming opportunities and there is some interest for naming of the virtual hospital. And things like that, so.
Do you have enrollment projections that coincide with these phases?
It looks at, uh, everything from demographics all the way out to twenty forty. Uh, one of, one of the problems for Germana is that our district is lopsided. The three counties, uh, in the west are projected through federal, state, other, you know, our Chomora economics. To grow to about, right now, we're talking ninety-seven thousand roughly, uh, to grow to a hundred and thirty-six thousand or so by twenty forty. Whereas the east side, which is, uh, currently close to four hundred thousand, is projected to be over eight hundred thousand. And so, we need a lot more buildings and so on on the east side. By making this our medical campus, which is a magnet set of programs, people will come from all over for these programs. And, and because it, these are expensive programs, you can't really put them everywhere, it, it makes better use of this campus. So, the projections for enrollment at this campus take into account not just the demography and projections for the three counties out west here. But the fact that these programs will bring people in. We've doubled our nursing program, for instance, a few years ago. We started a December class as well as a May class and we now have, um, somewhere on a hundred fifty RNs graduating a year. And our nursing program relative to our size is bigger than many of our sister schools.
I, I'd have to say, all the planning, the process you went through to get to this point, been very impressive. I know you worked hand in hand with county and, uh, just with all the organizations around and it's, it's really nice to see academia. Involved in the community in this process unlike it's been before.
Well, we are academia, but we're also, remember our middle name is community.
Right.
We're a different kind of academia, we're not, uh, I, I don't disparage the ivory tower. There's a need for people to research and think about things that don't have an immediate impact. That's a great mission. That's not our mission, our mission is more to get our, we're, get our hands dirty and, and be more local. Uh, we wanted to be good citizens. This was real easy to be good citizens, because your vision for this area that you developed is so much in tune for what we wanted to do anyway. So, thank you all who participated, either as members of this board or as citizens.
Besides the healthcare area, do you see any other areas for growth within this campus?
Well, uh, it depends on what happens in the area and down the road. We will continue to have the general degrees, the, the transfer degrees that lead to any kind of bachelor's degree. We'll continue to offer those here. But one of the limitations we have right now is our non-credit area. Where we have thousands and thousands of students coming to us every year, sometimes for one-day workshops or hour workshops or for, uh, four-year apprenticeship programs. We have no place to do that on this campus currently. So, we'll be able to do more of that.
Okay, so that is included, that is part of the, of the, the new construction to deal, to be able to provide more of that.
More, more space for the non-credit. Uh, we also, uh, can't really do much in the way of events at this campus, these amphitheaters help.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, David and I have been talking about this and I'm familiar with this type of activity with, with other places, uh, with community colleges where I work. And one of the things that we will do is work, uh, through our CIP process that this board, uh, is to contribute with, with the capital cost of this. There's a long tail to this, uh, process. And I know David's successor, I'll certainly be, be in communication with, but there's an orderly process that all of the, uh, the localities in the service area go through. To make contributions and understand what others have done is kind of the first part of it. So, um, I'll, you know, kinda keep this on the radar and periodically, when it's appropriate, bring back information to you. But this would go, if the board was inclined, make contribution, we'd definitely go through the capital improvement program.
Okay.
Are you in communication with the people of the P.E.D. workforce network in terms of looking at certification?
Representative on it and we're closely connected with them and with the people in the east side version too. With your forbearance, I know I've gone over my time a little bit, uh, but this probably is my last time as president, speaking before you. And I wanted to thank, uh, this board and all your predecessors and future boards for the support you have given and will continue to get to Germana. And to all of you and, and some of you in particular, for the support you've given me in my, uh, will be a little over ten years of, of serving. Germana, uh, Orange County, our service area and Virginia. As I think you know, Linda and I have chosen to be Virginians, we are retiring here, we built our retirement home, um, here. And it's in Lake of the Woods, so we're choosing to be Orange residents for as long as God allows us to live and be healthy. I don't plan on disappearing, uh, although my first year, I plan on not doing anything. I will be available informally to work with my successor in any way that I can to help, as Frank Turnage has done for me and he will continue to do so too. But I wanted to be sure to say thank you personally, as well as as president, so much. You've, you've made, uh, made my job easier, whether you know it or not. And I, I deeply appreciate everything and, and your help on this project as well, thank you.
Thank you, we would appreciate your leadership at the school all these years too. Okay. Next would be the consent agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, uh, all in favor say aye. Motion carries five zero, takes us to new business, uh, comprehensive mine run area zoning, Mr. David.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, while.
And Josh.
And Josh, uh, but Allison's going to bring up the map that was linked to the first, uh, memo on this so that we can see that, uh, the, the map. You all, uh, Supervisors Crozier and, and Mr. White, uh, came to you all in October, uh, talking of, uh, of maybe a way to approach. A zoning problem that these parcels that are, that are shaded, uh, confront, um, and I'll quickly list there. Some of these parcels have what are called split zoning, that there's really two different land use classifications on each parcel. There are parcels where the current land use does not align with the parcel's adopted zoning classification, say, commercial and it's residential or vice versa. And then some of these parcels have the best of both those problems and, 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 and it kinda goes on. This dates to a, a prior time in county zoning history. Uh, the board deferred this matter to allow, uh, Mr. White and Mr. Crozier work with us, uh, as staff to, to work out on how to outreach and communicate with the affected property owners. I'll let Mr. Crozier, Mr. White, um, kinda give you where we are with this. There is, uh, some, uh, a time that is certainly of, of the essence with, I think, some of Mr. Crozier's, uh, folks. And so, we're, we're asking and, and have started kind of plotting the, the path of getting this through a, uh, what's called a, more of an expedited process to get it, uh, through the public hearing process. So, you all can ultimately make a decision. I'll stop there, but the recommendations that, to authorize us to proceed through.
Mr. White and I have talked to each other and we'll work together to go out and visit the constituents that need to be visited still, uh, as soon as. Plan the zoning, I know, uh, Thomas has been working on the final paperwork, so.
We're, we're wrapping that up now.
So, uh, I just wanna say that I hope. In the future, when we have something that needs to be expedited, it's a little faster. I apparently did not make the right motion back in October to get to where we, where I thought we were going to be at, but, um, I think everything's in place now.
Well, just as a comment on this, not all the parcels that you see there are involved in this, uh, there, I, there's about four or five on, I'll call it the north side of Mine Run Road. And then down Doolin, there's another handful, ha- half a dozen or so. So, I think it's, I don't have a fine count, but, uh, it, it's not everything that you see there that is affected by this. Primarily parcels that are split zone and currently are zoned industrial and there's a home on it. On part of it, or zone commercial and there's a home on it, things like that, so. You can, you can tell by the, uh, the industrial zoning, which is the brown line there, that, uh, the, a lot of that was done when the county adopted a zoning order. They just said, they deemed that anything a certain number of feet off of the road would be zoned industrial and that's what happened. It was without regard to property lines or parcel lines or anything like that. So, this is really trying to clean that up and match it with the use.
That's where the sawmill actually was.
Yeah, that's right, I mean, yeah.
And the, the one other thing with this, um, I've already spoken with, uh, Mr. Brooks. Planning Commission has no problem whatsoever having a second meeting for the month of February, so that we can move this on through. So, it can come back to us at the end of this month for public hearing in order to move forward with this.
Do we know what changes we wanted to make, to be made?
Yes, yes.
With the property owners, uh?
All the property owners in my district that are affected, they're.
They know where they wanna go.
They absolutely only know where they wanna go.
Okay.
Uh, we have to finish approaching, uh, the handful of Mr. White's district.
Okay, yeah, it's really a question, do they go to residential or ag? They're gonna go down zone, these, these will all be downzoning, so. Okay. It's, it's now I, it'll go, if it changes, it'll go to, in some cases, R, because the parcels are so small. But in a few cases, it could be, uh, ag.
Okay, but then, pretty much the, the, uh, property owners are consider, are, uh, in agreement with this process?
That is actually what started this process, which was what, one of my constituents came to me wanting to do this and wanted to know the process. And also, at some point in the future, um, I know Mr. Frederick's been working on trying to clean up a lot of the old spot zoning. And I know there's one, uh, industrial parcel in your district that, uh, he'd asked me about doing now, but wanted to focus on this.
Focus on this, right.
If, if, if I could, it, the thought that occurred to me is that we're, what we've done is we prepared, um, what are, I guess, sheets of paper that shows the current zoning. What the proposed zoning would be, and we're also trying to give at least a, an understanding of what the tax implications may be through the Commissioner of the Revenue's office.
And to communicate. And to communicate to the landlords what the use implications are as well.
Use implications are.
Some of these people don't realize they're zoned industrial, for example, they live on a house.
We know it, but they may not. And so, one of the things that just occurred to me, Mr. White, Mr. Crozier, is there are a number of them ready to go. And there may be some that, we've got a window of about a week and a half to get these letters out with the joiners to hit this. So, that if there's a, a group of these properties that can't make that window because of not being able to communicate and get everybody comfortable, we may have a second go-round at, at, at this process.
Well, there are other properties in the county, sorry, I believe in Unionville, but Josh and I have had a couple of conversations about that are the same thing. It's a split zone piece that's partly ag or residential and partly C one.
And quite honestly, doing some of these cleanups will make it easier dealing with some of these other zoning issues in the future.
But on this mine run, we, we, because there are a window here, is there some that are ready to go and some that'll still need to be communicated with and they may want to think about it? We may have a second part two of this rezoning process for mine run. So, recommendation would be authorize us to proceed with the comprehensive mine run rezoning as proposed.
Now, a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, next is the proposed resolution in opposition to House Bill twenty-one oh eight.
Chairman, members of the board, as you all know and certainly with your support, I've been pretty well occupied with this matter for, for a while now. It seems like for several weeks. Just to be briefly recap, there was a bill introduced kind of at the eleventh hour on January eleventh by Delegate Kathy Byron. It was submitted, it was prepared and submitted on behalf of the Virginia Cable Telecommunications Association. This bill, as harmless as it sounds, is called the Virginia Broadband Deployment Act. I editorialized for a purpose. I, I think you all know and I've certainly talked with, with Amber and, and others at the newspaper and the community, that this really would stop our whole broadband efforts in, in its tracks. And I think this, this bill and its impact on local rural localities is now starting to reverberate around Virginia. And also, i- 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 there are, the cities of Virginia Beach, Norfolk and Chesapeake have now come out on record. Because this bill, not only for rural Virginia, Norfolk, in, in a fair reading, this bill will no longer be able to have public wifi hotspots in their downtown. And Virginia Beach now leases some of their extra capacity, their fiber network, their C fiber network, to private companies. And those private companies will no longer be able to have that opportunity. As recently as yesterday, I sent to you all a copy and I provided Amber a letter that was prepared by a law firm in Washington called the Ballard Law Firm. And the principal, I forget his first name, has been around telecommunications broadband since the early nineties. He was hired to come up with this letter and some of these companies, Netflix, Nokia and I would say Google, have come out all and articulate, I think, what we would all agree is a very articulate, a very cogent, very succinct way of, of speaking these companies' opposition to this bill. I prepared a resolution for you all's consideration, sent that out to you, I think, on Sunday. I, at Mayor Koiner's request and Dr. Tanner's request, I sent to them copies of this draft resolution. Gordonsville has adopted a resolution against HB twenty-one oh eight last night. Lake of the Woods has adopted letters and sent those on to Delegate Freedus and Senator Reeves. And I think the school board is going to be approving, Dr. Tanner sending a letter in opposition to this. I did speak with that Delegate Freedus, as you all know, last week. He has a lot of concerns with, with local governments, the public sector being in the provision of broadband. But he also says that if this is something this board is committed to and using local resources to do it, then, then county citizens certainly can hold you, hold us accountable for, for those dollars. And so, he's going to voice his opposition to, to this on behalf of the county. There is no senate bill and so, this is only in the House. There are some center leaders, particularly Senator Wagner, has come out in opposition. He chairs the Senate Labor and Commerce, Commerce and Labor Committee where this bill would go to. And he's already come out on record in opposition. So, if it gets out of the House, the ability to fear in the Senate may, may not be, be too good. But right now, Dean Lynch from VACO and Joe Lurch have been working pretty hard on this. And I got late yesterday that Delegate Bryant may be working on amendments to the bill, which means things are starting to, to move. And, and my impression is that there's probably a lot of the delegates in the House would not have to be, would not like to be put to the vote on this. That they would rather have this dealt in committee, meaning having it go away. So, I'll stop there, this is certainly prepared for you all to adopt tonight and subject to any changes you have or comments.
There was another bill that was, I don't know, I don't think it was actually introduced last year, that dealt with the issue of limiting the amount of how, what, how much could be charged? The fact that you had to provide tower space, building top space to anybody for a nominal fee. Do we know where that one stands?
Yes, sir, I just got a VACO alert today and, and was finding out some information. That bill has been in, is now getting ready for a committee. It has to do with five G service. And VACO's position is opposition and simply put, that the FCC has not even begun licensing five G spectrum. And that the technology, the hardware is not even there. And the, and the commitment of the companies actually to change this equipment out has not even started. And so, essentially, the consensus is, is that this is a bill way before its time and also it's using public infrastructure. Taxpayers have you, have put in to, to benefit the private, individual private sector companies. Let me give you an example, as it was explained to me with that particular bill. Five G is much ro- more robust than, than four G obviously because the number's greater. But there's a lot of technology that goes into creating smaller cells. Well, given the autonomous vehicles will be connected to the internet, there's a real desire on some telecommunications companies to be able to put these small cell antennas on traffic signal poles, streetlights and things. And so, if they're able to put these antennas on public infrastructure at little or no cost and then provide autonomous vehicles that connectivity to the internet, they have done a pretty good day's way of, of increasing their margins on that type of service. And so, I think that type of argument is starting to resonate and, and some legislators are starting to understand that, that this is not really a favorable thing for the taxpayers.
Okay, all right.
We hope.
Is, is there, is there a point where we should be taking a position of that bill as well?
Yeah, in fact, what I would like, I checked, neither Senator Reeves nor Delegate Freedus are on the respective committees that are hearing that bill. But after you take action on this, go ahead and take action in opposition to that bill and I'll communicate that as well to the delegates. If the board is predisposed.
Okay. In that case, I look for a motion.
I would move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
All right, motion is second, any further discussion?
I would just point out that the, the name of this bill is a good example of why politicians are rated lower than going to the dentist and having a root canal without Novocain. The Broadband Deployment Act, no, it's not the Broadband Deployment Act, it's the Broadband Anti-Deployment Act. It is a, it's an act to slow down broadband deployment. So, it's only the Broadband Deployment Act if you understand that it's a big stop sign to deployment of broadband. Have I, have I driven that nail in far enough?
No, I think, I think I would have said it, the Cable Industry Monopoly Protection Act.
Well, yes, that would be a, a much better, a much better name for it. But it just disgusts me that, you know, the, the name of the bill is deliberately misleading.
But that happens all the time.
I stay disgusted most of the time.
But from what, from what I've seen, it apparently took quite some time for the people that wanted the bill to find someone that would carry it for them.
Someone who was gullible enough to.
Gullible enough to, to do it. So, yeah, definitely not, not worthwhile.
All right. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries five zero. And you wanted to also add in another motion to.
Propose House Bill.
The other House Bill, you know.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Before the minutes, this is the Wireless Infrastructure Act, House Bill twenty-one ninety-six and Senate Bill twelve eighty-two.
That is correct.
The Wireless Infrastructure Act.
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, otherwise known as giving big business the right to locate their antennas on, on public property at no cost.
House Bill twenty-one ninety-six and Senate Bill twelve eighty-two. The first point from VML, I just got this in at four twenty-nine. This bill requires that locale, requires localities offer unfettered use of all local right-of-way and local buildings and grounds. Unfettered means?
Yeah, everything, yeah.
Anywhere, unfettered.
Unfettered.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. And also, just as a footnote, I've, I asked, this has not been scheduled to come before the House Commerce and Labor Committee. I've asked Dean Lynch and Joe Lurch to let me know if it is, then I'll certainly go down, like I did with the press conference and try to represent you all's interest.
Do you know if Senator Wagner has taken any kind of position on this other bill?
Uh, no, I don't, no, I don't.
Given, given the way he talked about the first one, I can't imagine that he wouldn't feel the same about that.
I suppose this lines up pretty close to what he, and he's also running for governor, he puts that out there as a disclaimer too.
All right. Uh, next in, the request for letter of support for RRCS.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, in years past, Brian Duncan with the Rapidant, Rapidant Community Service Board uses Commonwealth funding to buy the service vehicles, the, the transport vehicles and he seeks you all's support, just like the other governing bodies in his service area, to write, to, to have a letter sent by me in support of his application to Commonwealth.
So moved, second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries five zero. There appears to be no old business, so move on to Director Reports E nine one one, Senator Semley, Annual Report, Nikki.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. So, I'm here to present the biannual nine one one report, reporting on the, what we've been up to in calendar year two thousand sixteen. So, starting with call volume, our call volume for calendar year two thousand sixteen was forty-nine thousand one ninety-eight in totality, which is a little bit down from calendar year fifteen of fifty thousand nine fifty-five. Again, then when we start breaking everything down, we see the trends. We're still seeing that it's a seventy-five twenty-five split between wireless and wireline nine one one calls, that most calls come in on cell phones. We did see a peak in our call volume for our VoIP, Voice Over Internet Protocol. As more internet comes to the county, a lot of people go to VoIP providers to provide it, as actually to having a hard line in the phone, in the home. We again are tracking to make sure though, that even though that we're seeing some of these call volumes adjust, that we still, our abandoned rates are consistent and that our call volume processing time is less than ten seconds ninety-nine percent of the time. And I can tell you that we do, do meet those numbers consistently.
Nikki, quick question, on the VoIP calls.
Yep.
Have you found any issues with them or have they proven to be as reliable?
They've actually gotten better, they passed some stricter legislation. Before, there was something called norma, normatic VoIP, where basically you could take your, if you had a VoIP cell phone and it was attached to your laptop, if you moved to Texas but forgot to re-register it out of Virginia, when you dial nine one one, it would actually come back into Virginia. So, we see that once in a while, the call, again, they're just normatic ones. Or a VoIP nine one one call used to go to a VoIP processing facility and then come to nine one one. Uh, which, again, now you've added in several more layers of human error, uh, so things do get mistaken. They've removed most of that and now most VoIP, they call it E VoIP basically, or enhanced VoIP, just like E nine one one, enhanced nine one one. And now it comes directly into the call centers. Occasionally, because its humans are involved and they're the ones who manually type in the addresses, you do get the wrong addresses once in a while, so. Even though our call volume overall was actually down, the calls for service still continue to increase. You can see from calendar two thousand fifteen to calendar two thousand sixteen, we had a four point seven eight percent increase in calls for service. And overall, looking at this, now we actually have, have been here long enough, I can produce five years stats for you, that we've actually seen a seventeen point two one percent increase in five years. Again, this is just cautious to watch this as we move forward into the future. The last time we up-staffing was back in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. And we're again continually seeing these, these growths and these trend patterns. So, we're gonna keep an eye on this and again, that's where the, can we process calls in less than ten seconds? And what measurements do we have in place to make things sure that we are, are able to really keep up with the call volume that's coming into the nine one one center? Because we may not be receiving as many calls, but we're definitely dispatching more calls.
I, I noticed that your total of nine one one calls is about fifteen thousand. And you say your total number of calls for service is nineteen thousand. What's, what's the difference?
The graph shown is FY, so it's just the first six months. So, it's just a prediction, whereas I had pulled the calendar phone, uh, calendar year phone admin. And as soon as you said that, I realized that I had produced FY and not calendar year, so I apologize.
Okay.
But it looks like it's right on target, you know, the numbers are gonna be right there as what they were the year before if you look at the FY. So, it's only six months of data that, that we're reflecting there.
Okay.
Our staffing, for the first half of FY seventeen, and we do do staffing by fiscal years because of the way the budget process runs, we did lose one full-time employee in FY sixteen and that, that employee was terminated back in November. When we came into the beginning though of FY seventeen, we had seen some, some turnover. And as you can see, we actually had to go out and hire five trainees to replace. So, a big focus of the nine one one center in the past six months has been getting the trainees released, getting them through the in-house training program, getting them certified. And we can say that all of them have passed, we're flying colors, the, the training programs and they're all here today. We did pick up a new supervisor and she actually started January eighth. And we also picked up a new CTO and she started January ninth. And luckily for us, our supervisor started dispatching in nineteen eighty-eight, so has years and years and years of experience. And I've actually known her through her work career, we've never worked together up until recently and came highly recommended. So, we were very, very happy to snag her. And our, our new training officer comes from Call Pepper and has about three and a half years of experience in dispatching from Call Pepper and had been functioning as a training officer. So, so that was a really good fit and two really good finds for us just recently. We're excited to have them here. So, overall, looking at the first half, our retention rate for, for FY seventeen is at ninety percent. So, we did, we realized that we had an issue and we've been working diligently to get the, the retention rate back up into the, the numbers that we like to see. Looking at all our systems, for our CAD system, we had done an upgrade and we have completed it, everything is functioning just fine. We did run into a little bit of a radio system with some of the software that we have on the consoles in the nine one one center. And it was causing the radio to stick on the wrong channel. Basically, what was happening then is that a fire department could hear tones but no voice. Probably very familiar with that. We brought in Claire and we brought in Motorola on the discussions. And we did actually, when I typed this memo, we hadn't actually implemented the near future, uh, the, the fix for this. But we have actually come up with a fix to work around this. We actually borrowed one of our interoperability channels from Madison and repurposed it. And now its only job is to make sure that when we page a, a EMS or fire department out, that, that's all, its only job is to do that. It's not, doesn't have to switch channels, the dispatcher doesn't have to do anything manual. And knock on wood, we love it and wish we had, you know, done this five years ago, basically. Our EMD, we're in the process of re-accreditation, in fact, we're waiting on my CPR card, but we will be re-accredited under the Virginia Office of EMS. Uh, the phone system is actually working fine, we have only received one text in nine one one since, since it was launched. We did have a little bit of fear about, will this inundate us, but we can see that no texting is available, we have publicized it. But we've, everybody is taught from this height that when you have, you dial nine one one, if, you know, on the side of police cars, it says dial nine one one. And we're still teaching dial nine one one, not text nine one one. But it's good to know that we actually do have that. Uh, but it's good to know that we actually do have that service.
Received one.
So.
Probably first grader.
Our digital, uh, our digital recorder is working fine, no issues there. Our domain server in December had a fatal hard drive failure, uh, we worked with IT to restore and discussed backup and redundancy, and what this, uh, we lost the ability to send out any text messages, any emails, uh, we couldn't log out of computers. Um, some of the backups that we thought we had in place weren't quite what we thought we had, again, unfortunately, it was just a learning opportunity, it wasn't that anybody, you know, did anything wrong with us. And, uh, I know Larry is still working on this, so we'll have, um, dual redundancy with this actually, uh, domain server, so if it fails, um, then it should just roll over and continue operating as normal. The generators, all the generators are working fine, uh, we've checked all the propane levels at the, all the tower sites and everything is good to go, and the facility, there is no reported update to it. So in FY sixteen, as I said, um, our focus was to get staff back up to ten full-time employees, that was, that had to be the primary focus, we had to pull ourselves up from being down, short-staffed. Um, so they all completed the sixteen-week in-house academy, and like I said, they've all completed CPR, EMD, Public Safety Telecommunications, they're in the process of attending fire communications, and they've all completed ICS one, two, and seven. Like I said, we've already upgraded our CAD system, so that is functioning well again. We further continue to develop performance standards and measurements with the use of First Watch and the, um, the, and the COFEM staff. So we're now able to track a lot more things from what happens when this call hits nine-one-one. Um, did my staff process it within two minutes, did they dispatch it out within thirty seconds, did they mark the right unit and route in the, in a, in a decent time? And we have these benchmarks set there, and we're actually able to take and aggregate this data seamlessly and actually see the whole picture of what's going on with the system.
Do you have any kind of a report that talks about all of that, in terms of, of the times and the standards and what you've been doing?
Uh, we haven't formulated a report, because we've only just ourselves pulled finally six months of data, um, and we're kind of still sorting through it ourselves, and does this mean something, or does this not mean something? Um, but I have analyzed the nine-one-one's, uh, data, and again, the benchmarks that we have are call, um, a call processing for fire and EMS, EMS has two minutes, fire has a minute. Uh, dispatching a fire truck, you have thirty seconds, dispatching an ambulance, you have thirty seconds, and then we look and see how the team is doing in totality. Uh, from the time that phone rings, the time a unit gets dispatched, you have two and a half minutes for EMS and ninety seconds for fire.
Are you getting any, uh, what's the feedback, if you got the data with regard to the response times and the respond, the responding units?
Uh, we're starting to pull that, now that we've got a good six months database worth of stuff, so we are starting to pull that. Uh, we're able to now, uh, capture better, how many times are we dispatching county-wide EMS, or how many times there's no ambulances left, you know, I know we've painted this picture, but now objectively, we can measure that for you. Um, how many times a unit did or didn't get out on a call, be it because they were already tied up on another call, so we've actually even, you know, we don't, we call it stationed on another call. So if, you know, twenty-nine's already out on something and they get hit for another call, we don't penalize them for already handling a call, but we're able to capture that it's a second call.
Well, that's why I was saying, trying to look at that kind of data in terms of, of capturing them, a little bit would respond to what we have to deal with later, so.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, we've got all sorts of data, it's just a matter of what data do we want, basically, is more of the question. So, response times, um, we have those, we have out-of-shoe times, how much time a unit's spending at the hospital, it, it gets quite in-depth, not to steal from you, John, I know it's his program.
Well, as I say, I would, it, it, uh, it would, I'd like to see that at some point, uh, you know, just what those, what those numbers are beginning to meet, if you've got six months' worth of data. And, uh, maybe I'll just sit down with you and we'll, we'll look and see what we.
Yeah, and Assistant Chief, um, Mord is the other person, um, who is, um, he's the other First Watch expert, such a better expert, so absolutely, yeah. Uh, we presented numerous life-saving awards, if you remember, we had Mister Nettles here, and, uh, he presented his award, and then the several Smart nine-one-one Save Awards that we had, from people reaching out, using our text messaging features, um, to suicidal subjects and actually locating them, and that happened several times. We did submit grant funding for GIS projects in approximately about fifty-eight thousand dollars, and that's to kind of help with some of the things that were on that GIS roadmap. Um, so we, uh, worked with, uh, what did, uh, Timmons to actually help us with this grant to submit it, to help us knock off some of those things that were on the roadmap specific to cleaning up data for nine-one-one. We're continuing to work through the radio system needs assessments, and, uh, we did complete all the field surveys, and I think probably the biggest thing that we actually started this year, um, that I'm very proud of, especially, um, Angelina Bragg, I have to give her, uh, the credit as my supervisor. Uh, we actually submitted, um, our application to Kalia. As you know, you hear me talking about accreditation for EMD, you hear me, uh, we receive accreditation for our training program. Uh, Kalia is the, another national organization that certifies our whole agency, not just a piece of it, from our human resource practices, um, to our financial management, our fiscal practices, to our operational practices, to make sure that what we're doing in the nine-one-one center is fair and equal to all employees. It's gonna be about an eighteen-month process, it is very long, it is very tedious, um, but it will absolutely do due diligence to make sure that how we set ourself up in the nine-one-one center does actually meet national accreditation standards. And we can prove that if we say we're gonna run a monthly report, we're actually running a monthly report and doing something with that information, so I'm very excited for that project too. So that's it for about the nine-one-one center, other than continuing to work on the public safety facility and the, the radio project too, uh, which we know that, um, keep, is keeping on moving forward, so if there's any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Alright, uh.
If we could maybe do this last item, then most everybody, we don't have anything coming up.
Okay.
I hope this won't take too long.
Alright, uh, that would be then the county administrator's report.
Yeah, I don't think county attorney had.
I have no report.
Yes.
Uh, Mister Chairman, members of the board, I, I talked to you individually and also put together this memo, um, as Nikki and, and John have shared, and, and Mister Crozier's aware of this, and Mister Fram from his, his work with Lake of the Woods Rescue, we're, we're becoming stretched in our ability to have medic units and a fifth unit, I know we've talked about this in the past. Today's not to, I guess, start that deliberation, um, but I, I, I'm confronted with, with a balancing of, of this need for, for a fifth unit, and objectively or qualitatively needing it, but also the guidance of presenting you a balanced budget without increasing any of the local tax levies. As you know, and I think the county has received in the past what's called a Safer Grant, and I've spelled it out, uh, that grant application's due by this Thursday, uh, Thursday, February ninth, with announcements made in June. Uh, this pays seventy-five percent for year one of these personnel expenses, seventy-five for year two, and twenty-five for year three, thirty-five for year three, good, ten-one percent. But it's, at some end of the day, the county will be on, on the hook for a hundred percent. In order to allow me to have some flexibility and, and, and Ms. Bradley, uh, to, to work through our balancing of the budget, I, I'd like to have the, the flexibility of going ahead and applying for this grant, understanding clearly, not committing you to a course of action, and if that fifth unit is not in the adopted budget, budget, then you are not obligated to accept the grant. It just gives me an ability to, to, to have some flexibility.
Uh, I, I would move that you go ahead and apply for the grant.
I'd second it.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, I do have one question for, uh, John. Uh, I'm looking at his calls for service, uh, for two thousand sixteen, it's seventy-seven hundred.
It's seventy-seven hundred total fire and EMS calls in, in the county, are you referring to the chart?
Yeah, and I'm looking at, uh, Nikki's calls for service of nineteen thousand.
This is calls for fire and EMS service.
So, the nineteen thousand includes calls for police service as well?
So the nineteen thousand for us includes all call volume for nine-one-one, so it could be nine-one-one hangup, nine-one-one transfer, or, or fire.
Okay, alright, alright, that's fine, that's the only question.
That was easy.
There's just a big difference in the two numbers.
Okay. Motion and a second, uh, alright, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Alright, uh, any board comment?
Yeah, hungry.
Any question on the informational item?
No, actually, I do have a board comment, um. We, uh, I think everyone is aware that, uh, we've been working for a while trying to come up with, uh, uh, answer to some issues out at Montpelier. And, uh, I think everyone is aware that Montpelier has now asked that that process be, uh, set aside for the time being. And, uh, I would just point out that the, the county, uh, started that process, uh, in large measure, because there are a number of, um, projects that over the years, Montpelier has just simply gone ahead with and didn't get, um, proper permitting and, uh, zoning permits and so forth and so on. So we still have that problem hanging out there, and, uh, uh, I don't have a problem with, uh, with setting aside the, uh, the larger issue of this zoning district, but, uh, we do need to deal with the, with the non-conformities that are out there. And, uh, so I would suggest that we need to, uh, we need to address that, and we need to have staff begin to work on that. Uh, this is something that, uh, has happened over, uh, a fairly good period of time, I don't know when the first violation occurred, or, you know, um, but it's at least been going on for ten years, and I think longer than that. Uh, but there is a, uh, a real feeling out there in, in my neck of the woods at least, that, you know, it's, it's, it's not right when, um, uh, Joe Blow wants to do something, he's gotta get permits, and Montpelier seems to just have gotten a, uh, sort of a free pass to do whatever they wanted to. And people are kind of annoyed about it, I, I must say there, it's from all points of the political compass, it's not, uh, it's not any one direction, there's people kind of, uh, across the, the spectrum that are pretty wound up about it. And, uh, so, I, I don't think, I think we need to go ahead, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna withdraw the process, then we need to move on, on dealing with the, uh, violations that are out there now. And, uh, anything new they wanna do, they need to come in and get a special use permit or a rezoning or, or what have you. And that's, that's what I hear over and over from my constituents, is they don't like the idea of Montpelier getting any, uh, sort of a free hand there, they, they, they want Montpelier to, to have to come like any other entity, uh, through the Planning Commission and the board public hearings, and, and actually, uh, um, you know, let the public know what they're doing and just go through the normal process. They don't like the idea of a blank check.
Okay.
I agree with you, and that was, uh, one of the things when I went through the Planning Commission as well, that it was, the initial aspect was to correct the violations. And I, I don't believe that Montpelier would have any, any issue with it anyway, but, uh, I agree, we, we need to go ahead and correct those things that, uh, whether they realized or didn't realize what they were doing, go ahead and get them to come into compliance.
Are those issues cataloged anywhere at this point, or do we still need to develop?
I think there's pretty much three of them in general, is the cafe, the bookstore visitor center, and the.
Did they ever address the signage, or, I think maybe that's what it was.
Let me, uh, let me suggest this, I, I think Josh and myself and Tom, Tommy Miller, we pretty come up with a, I guess, a list of non-conforming uses, I would imagine all the structures are fine out there, there's not a setback.
No.
No, I, I don't think we should start with assumptions, I think we should go out there and, and, uh, see what, uh, see what the situation is.
And then we can bring a report back to you as soon as possible.
Yeah, because, uh, I think it would help not only the county, but would help Montpelier as well as the community, so that when they do their consultant's work and everything, they're coming out with a clean slate, and, uh, we've, we've gotten everything to the right balance for everybody.
But I, I wanna understand that, 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 my P O R has a question, I think the Planning Commission is, is the suspension of this, I think this is part of it to work with their new land planner, uh, but also to present that work to their board before it would come back to the Planning Commission. What, Mister Johnson, what you're, what you're looking for us to do is to go out there and, and go and, and physically identify and be comfortable with, here are the non-conforming uses and the non-conforming structures with that type of inventory, and then a, 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 a zoning action that would, would bring all of that into compliance in, 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 in a kind of a comprehensive way, you know. And so that, I guess where I'm going, I, I haven't thought through, and Josh, I, uh, whether that's a parallel process, the same process, or what?
Well, I, I, I now question the original premise and whether it's workable. Uh, but it, it seems to me that if, um, let's just say, and I'm, I'm not trying to, I'm not picking at anybody, but let's just say a private landowner, uh, it was discovered that they had, you know, fifteen violations. Um, I think the board, I think the, uh, county staff would, would catalog those violations, and then we would have to decide how we're gonna deal with them. Uh, some of them may be, uh, uh, if they, if they have to go through, I would think they have to go through, there's some kind of a public hearing, and it, and it may be that some of those violations, uh, that are going on out there, uh, theoretically could be stopped. The Planning Commission, the board supervisors might say, no, we don't want that going on, I'm not saying that's the case, but I'm saying that's, this is not, I don't, I don't think this is just a, uh, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna write them all up and then, and then say, okay, that's okay, keep on doing what you're doing, 'cause if, if, if that's the process, then, then it doesn't really amount to much.
So they would have to come in with a, for, uh, appropriate public hearings for these things that they currently have as non-conforming, and, uh, request, uh, through the process to get permission to do those?
Yes.
Well, if, if, uh, Mister Fram, following up on that, if I understand, Mister Johnson, we would go and catalog these non-conforming uses, non-conforming structures, and you would go through a process to make them conforming, however we would characterize that.
Or, or perhaps you would, you would ta- take that information to Montpelier and say, this is what we found, how do you wanna proceed?
Because the board would have the discretion of whether to approve those to make them conforming, either to use or not, which means if you don't, then it has to stop, or with structures, you have to remove the structure, that type of thing. So that's pretty dramatic, and I'm not trying to go down there, but why don't we do the catalog and at least make sure we're aware of it, we certainly can share that with you all, and then communicate that with Montpelier.
Any thoughts as to how long it would take to make that determination?
Well, um, um, Josh, we, we've got a lot, and, uh, it's not often you hear me say this, it's not often, but, Josh, uh, there's a lot on the plate right now. And, and I just wanna be mindful of getting the quality work that you all expect of us, and we wanna deliver. Um, but let, let us group, and, and I certainly can follow up with Mister Johnson, and, and we can figure it out, but, uh, what you ask is very reasonable, I don't, I, I, for us.
Well, you're talking about, I mean.
The catalog.
No, I, no, I, I, you're, you're, are you talking about, uh, three months, six months?
Until I talk to.
Six weeks.
Six days, I, I, I don't, don't know, uh, let me.
Okay.
I don't wanna give you a date and then be overly optimistic, or.
Let, let's, let's say that at our next meeting, you'll be able to give us kind of an update on the, on the process in terms of how long you think it's gonna take.
The scope, how's that?
Yeah, you know, let us, let us know kind of the, yeah, the timeline.
Scope and, and things, okay.
Yeah.
And, and I, I think Montpelier would be very willing to, to help identify.
Oh, sure.
Because, uh, yeah, once again, it's in our best interest as well.
Okay.
Okay, I, I'll have an update, and I'll handle that for you all at the next meeting.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, that being said, would you read the magic words, sir?
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss enclosed meeting the following, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating process of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provisional legal advice. In consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provisional legal advice by such counsel. Two matters concerning the salary or performance of specific personnel. Discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for a public purpose, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. And whereas pursuant to sections two point two thirty, eleven, eleven, a one, a three, and a seven of the third of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County receive or authorize discussion for said matters in closed meeting, need that as a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are in closed.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements. And that only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Fram?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, uh. One last thing, board comment, if anybody's interested. When I went to the Town of Orange meeting the other night, they're discussing running a multi-use trail. And from the old gardener junkyard down to Chatter Island and then trying to put a dog park down in Chatter Island, so. All right, uh, we had anything on the informational items? I had before and everything. Appointments to board commissions and committees?
You wanna do it or you want me to do it?
You're, you're the guy that's, I, I already tried to do it last time and you didn't like it, what I wanted to do.
That's right. Uh, I'd like to appoint George Jancy to the Health Center Commission.
I'll second.
Okay, any other? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me.
Discussion to Mr. White?
Right. Read the words there. Term will expire.
Mr. White remains on the senior living and the foundation board.
Right.
So he stays, keeps coming to the meetings.
Yeah, I did, just by way of background, George spends a lot of time there and, and I no longer have time to do that. And so it, it's really better for him to serve in that capacity. I'm, I'm not going anywhere.
Okay. Uh, let's see, public comment? No, okay. Anything on the calendar? In that case, I would entertain a, a motion.
So moved to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.